Of the April twentieth meeting to approve. Any discussion on the minutes?
I read them, I didn't see them.
I guess I didn't even bring a copy.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Second.
Ken made a motion to approve the minutes from the April twentieth meeting and Jerry seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Any ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or in memoriam? Hearing none, we'll move on to committee reports. I asked Jerry to give us a little update on a, an activity called C three that he's been representing us more so than me. So Jerry, you want to tell everybody a little bit about C three?
Yeah, Dan, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Contrary to belief, three C, C three doesn't stand for the three cities that have been in it. It's actually Carroll County Collaborative, formed in 2013 for the purpose of promoting countywide collaboration regarding economic development, affordable housing, job creation, workforce development, and strategic planning for all the municipalities in Carroll County. City, or at that time, the town of Holiday Island was asked to join the group after incorporation and as Dan mentioned, we've participated in monthly meetings since February. The main, the economic development and job creation recruiting business has been the primary focus, but we've narrowed it down to this year to focus on identifying affordable housing in the region and maintaining a database of space and land available for retail, commercial, and industrial businesses. We've also discussed enlisting local chambers of commerce to explore more collaborative efforts instead of, you know, just kind of on their own. The county offers diverse opportunities for business growth and development. For example, Eureka and Holiday Island are strong in the area of tourism and recreation, while Berryville and Green Forest are home to major industries. One thing that we're going to do, or plan to do, is put a professionally done marketing piece that highlights all four of the municipalities as well as the county. Some of the information is going to come from the raw data, the census that was just released earlier this month. And won't be all of that, and there'll be data from other sources as well. Each municipality is being asked to pitch in $500 to share in the cost of the creation of the piece that will also be available for us to have on our website. But I sent you a couple, a couple of the raw data that some, some of that information will be used for Holiday Island. And I also sent you the one from Eureka, which can be found on the Eureka Springs city site that shows how the information will be presented.
Huh? You sent it to whom?
Can you speak into the microphone because no one can hear you?
I, I, you said you sent it.
I, I sent it by email.
I don't think I received it.
It came today.
Yeah, this morning.
This morning?
Uh huh.
Okay. I, I did work this morning and then I shut the computer down.
Okay. Anyway, to repeat just a little bit of it, where the collaborative effort is to promote the virtues of Northwest Arkansas, this part of the Northwest Arkansas, and all the quality of life resources and various things that, that make us attractive to businesses. The main thing that we're working on is putting together a marketing piece digitally and printed using data from various sources, including the census, State Department of Economic Development, and any other sources. We're, we're behind everyone else because they've been working on this for a while, especially Eureka. But I think it'd be a good, good piece to, for the city to promote what all we've got going here and so that's basically it. Anybody have any questions?
When I browsed through it, there's a lot of good information in it that we can use for, like you said, for advertising Holiday Island. But it's also great information that the Planning Commission can use to create its plan for the future because it's about the population growth and the change and where we've been. So we collect our own data and fill it in. It's a great examples of how we would do that and use it.
Yeah, I mean, we're, I mean, Eureka is, is the best example of the four. But I mean, you, you can put any data you want. I mean, I've talked to, and I know Dan has talked as well, to Robert Evans about listing some of the retail space he may have available. Any, anybody that owns commercial type property include that is kind of a resource. And the idea behind the, is that if somebody's here scouting something and we don't have, we're not a right fit, but Eureka does, or Berryville does, we can, you know, refer them to them and show, you know, here's, this might be something you want to look at. Because in today's mobile society, I mean, you live in Holiday Island and being Berryville and, you know, 25 minutes, 20 minutes, and vice versa. So I, I know that, I think Linda's been involved with this group before from High Sid. I guess they've been dormant for a while and they, once the Holiday Island became a city, they, they decided to kind of get it going again.
I attended two or three times in place of Lawrence. Lawrence was a member, so is a member.
Yeah, the people, the people that go are, are like, there's a Berryville Chamber guy goes, the Chris Claybaker, the head of the economic development in Berryville goes. Green Forest has already only been to one meeting, so the, kind of the ramrod of it is the Sandy Martin, who's the Economic Development Director at Eureka Springs. And she's a advertising professional and graphics person and she's the one that actually put together these, will be putting together these perspectives, pieces. So, I mean, there's a lot of work to do, but I think in the long run, it behooves us to be involved.
Yeah, we're going to have to do some work, meaning Jerry's going to have to do some work in pulling together the kind of data that we want, you know, in our, you know, slice of that advertising pie. Because, you know, some of the things, you know, some of the demographic information that's available through the Census Bureau isn't necessarily reflective of the community because it, it kind of assumes that we're a working class community like every other community around here. And, you know, we're, you know, we're really quite different from as, like a Berryville or a Forest City. So we're, we're definitely going to want to use data that reflects what the community is actually. Like we're going to want to have a lot of data in there about, you know, weekend rentals and stuff like that. Both as an opportunity to come here and stay, but also as an opportunity to invest in Holiday Island and that kind of property if you want to be a business. And so.
Linda messaged a demographic at the Rotary Meeting Friday that just floored me that there are, what, 80 school age, school age kids that live in Holiday Island?
Under five.
Under five, so there's no telling how many.
Yeah.
Yeah, now that may have included grandparents who are coming so they can get books for grandchildren.
I, you know, thinking on the economic development thing, you know, I, I think the most pressing thing that we need in Holiday Island is some kind of a medical facility.
Yeah, there's, there's some action, there's some activity on that front, but I'm not at liberty to.
Well, I was told Robert Evans is trying to get somebody in one of those units up there. But, I mean, I, I would like to see us get involved in, in, in something like. Because that is a, that's a, one of the primary drawbacks to people moving here.
Yeah, there, there is some activity and we're kind of in the middle of it, but I don't want to talk about it right now.
I just, I did, you know, say, I, I think that would should be a very pointed effort for us at some point in time. It's a little probably premature right now.
Yeah. But, you know, obviously, we're not going to be attracting a Tyson or somebody like that to Holiday Island because we don't have, you know, five acres of flat ground. So, you know, it's going to, whatever we do with our, you know, C three documents, it's going to reflect much more heavily into, you know, lifestyle, affordable housing, and things like that, working from home, things like that, so. But we have a lot of work to do before we, before we can actually have Sandy do the graphics for us and produce a document. And at some point, Jerry's going to come and ask us for $500. And I think it'd be $500 well spent. Okay, anything else on that? April financials?
Okay, I sent those out to the mayor and council people. I'll just touch on them briefly. If you have any questions, you can let me know. For the general fund for the month of April, we had revenue of $17,268. And the only expense that we had was $1,212 for rent. So we had a positive cash flow there of $16,000. And the, now, the revenue there, we had budgeted $19,000 in revenue for the general fund and it actually came out to 17. So we'll see how that develops. April was the first month. I'm, and the, the distributions of sales tax revenue is two months behind when the merchants or whoever collect the tax. Because they collect it one month, pay the state the next month, the state distributes it the next month. So that's two months behind. I'm thinking in March, their revenue might have been greater, but we'll see in February. The street fund, we took in $14,430. Of course, we had no expenditures for any street expenses, so that was a positive for the month. Our budget was $14,546 for the month, so we're within $116 a budget on the street fund. And I'll comment, our distributions for May, which are not shown here, were $17,000. So we're like $3,000 over budget for May. So we'll see how that balances out. And of course, when you look at the year-to-date amounts, the year-to-date budgets were based on a full year of operations and thinking that we might start receiving monies in January. And of course, that didn't happen until April. So year-to-date, we are under budget on everything.
We may catch up when they start using 2020 census data too.
So I think, you know, with the economy and the general fund, our share of sales tax, and I think all over has stood up well through this virus period. One of the big reasons is back a year ago, the states started collecting sales tax on internet sales. And they figured that's helped a great deal.
Okay, any questions on the financials?
Wes, in the last legislative session, they passed an act that requires the folks that pay sales tax to break down that distribution by sales tax ID number or some sort of feature. Did that revenue come with any kind of ledger that showed that kind of thing?
No.
We may have to ask for it. I haven't read the act.
All I get is a total, yeah, and I'm aware that they did that. And that may not be in effect yet, if that's something that's not going to take effect until July.
Okay.
Yeah, unless they attach an emergency to it, it'll be July the first.
So when that date comes, it might help us analyze, you know, the, the share of, whether it's a share or our own would be most beneficial to Holiday Island.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions on the financials? We don't need to approve them.
I have one question.
Okay.
On the cash ledger, there was the internet service expense, but I didn't see it on the other statement.
Well, that was, went on the credit card and the credit card is a month behind in making payments. So that will show the April payment, the April charge to the credit card will show up in May payments.
Okay, so you pull it out of our money, but it doesn't show up as a.
Right, they charge it to the credit card, but we don't even get the bill on the credit card until the following month.
So it'll, it'll be a, what, a credit card expense that shows up here, or will you break it down?
I break it down.
Okay.
And I, I think, and that's where the phone and the internet, no, not the internet, the phone and the website.
Email, website, yeah.
Yeah, and I think those go into one budget category, so.
Okay, so Linda, you're going to post these on the website then?
Yes, I will.
All righty. Going on to, there's no old business under new business. We have a resolution 2021-020 authorizing joining the municipal league. Do I have a motion to put the resolution on the floor for discussion?
So I'll move.
Jerry made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Linda seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Wes, you want to read the resolution?
Yes. Resolution number 2021-020. A resolution authorizing becoming a member of the Arkansas Municipal League and payment of the related dues, including membership in the Municipal League Defense Program. Whereas the city of Holiday Island has been recently incorporated and is establishing operations as a municipal government. And whereas it would be beneficial for the city of Holiday Island to utilize the services offered by the Arkansas Municipal League, which is organized to provide services to Arkansas municipal governments. And whereas the city of Holiday Island has a need for legal assistance and financial protection in various types of activity and litigation which is offered to cities participating in the Arkansas Municipal League's Municipal Legal Defense Program, the MLDP. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Holiday Island that the city of Holiday Island shall become a member of the Arkansas Municipal League and Holiday Island City Recorder Treasurer Wesley Stilly is hereby authorized to pay the annual per capita fee, which is currently $831 per year, based on the current estimate of the city population. And be it further resolved that the city of Holiday Island will participate in the League's Municipal Legal Defense Program, MLDP. And the Holiday Island City Recorder Treasurer Wesley Stilly is hereby authorized to pay the annual per capita fee, which is $2,820 per year, based on the current estimate of the city population. Passed and approved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on the date of 5/18/2021.
Just one correction, the per capita fee for the Legal Defense Fund is $2,825 per year? You said 2820. You said 2820.
Oh, okay.
You're going to short him five bucks.
No, can't do that.
Ms. Mayor, question?
Yes, any discussion on the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Ken?
Does that start, that's annual, is that going to start to like the first of June and then, or is it?
I think it starts immediately. I think it's already started and we've been receiving their services probably since the first of the year. And I have the bill, they billed us.
They billed us starting in January?
It doesn't say.
I mean, I just was wondering what, what, it's a year, but when does it?
It says 2021 annual service charge.
So it starts in January? Okay.
That's the way I would take it. Now, they also, they showed on here a fee for the MLDP Non-CDL Employee Drug Testing Program. That would be $452, but we don't have anyone subject to that. And I was told, don't, you know, don't worry about it.
Don't worry about that.
So it, it would be an annual thing that would be payable in January of the year?
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the resolution? The vice, Wes, you can call the roll.
Okay, do we need to have a motion to approve? Have a motion to vote?
I make a motion.
Good idea. Ken made a motion to approve the resolution 2021-020. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Linda seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you want to roll call?
Yes, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, Councilmember Graves?
Yes.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
All in favor, your honor?
Okay, so we will now be official members of the municipal league.
They've been very, very, very helpful.
They've been treating us like members all along.
Yeah.
I'm actually on the resolutions committee for the, the summer conference already.
And we've been receiving the services of the Legal Defense Fund too because if you don't belong to that fund, you don't get any legal advice, period.
Yeah.
And we have received some legal advice, apparently, yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, ordinance 2021-002 authorizing a planning and zoning commission. Do I have a motion to place this ordinance on the floor for discussion?
I move that we put it on the floor for discussing 2021-002.
Lynn made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Lynn, you want to read your ordinance?
Certainly. Ordinance number 2021-002. An ordinance establishing the Holiday Island City Planning Commission for the city of Holiday Island, Carroll County, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas common law establishes the power of incorporated cities of the second class to adopt and enforce plans for the coordinated, adjusted, and harmonious development of the city of Holiday Island and its environs and the activities associated with urban planning. And whereas planning and zoning of the city of Holiday Island is necessary for the orderly growth of the community, the protection of property values, and the interests of its residents. And whereas the city council has determined that it is in the best interest of the city of Holiday Island that a city planning commission be created to better provide for the public welfare, safety, comfort, and convenience of its citizens. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section one, establishment. Pursuant to Title 14, Chapter 56, Subchapter 4 of the Arkansas Code of 1987 annotated and as amended, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission is hereby created and shall be bound by and operate under in accordance with the requirements and conditions of said statute. Section two, planning and zoning recommendations to the mayor and city council. Following the completion of adequate studies, through discussion and appropriate public input and disclosure, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, or commission, shall submit recommendations regarding development and redevelopment policies, general and specific plans, ordinances, and regulations to the mayor and council. It is the intent that this planning process be continuous and that the commission will be an ongoing part of the decision-making process relative to development and redevelopment activity in Holiday Island. Such studies and recommendations may be initiated by the commission or may be requested by the mayor and council. Section three, composition, disclosures, terms, attendance, and compensation for, of commissioners. Paragraph A, pursuant to Arkansas Code of 1987 annotated 1456404, section A two, the city council may elect to allow the city council to serve as the commission and zone, zoning planning of adjustment, excuse me, the zoning board of adjustment by ordinance approved by a majority vote of the elected city councils, city council members. Pursuant to ACA 1456406, paragraph A two, the mayor shall then serve as the chair of the commission. Paragraph B, alternatively, pursuant to Arkansas Code of 1987 annotated 1456404, paragraph A one, the members of the commission or commissioners shall be comprised of five commissioners, all appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council. Four commissioners shall be appointed at large, of whom shall not hold any municipal office or appointed except membership on the zoning board of adjustment. One commissioner shall be appointed from the city council members. All commissioners shall be residents of Holiday Island and continue throughout the term of the appointment. Paragraph C, all commissioners must disclose annually all real estate holdings in Holiday Island and in the Holiday Island planning area, and any business or financial interests which could affect or be affected by decisions of the commission. All commissioners are required to file an annual disclosure report with the city recorder treasurer pursuant to ACA 218703, as may be amended from time to time. No two commissioners shall be related by blood or marriage in the third degree or shall any two commissioners have direct financial involvement. All commissioners shall have a demonstrated interest, experience, or expertise in land use planning. Paragraph D, terms of appointment shall begin on June 1st. Commissioners appointed at large, unless appointed to fill an unexpired term, shall be appointed to serve for a term of three years and may be reappointed to three-year terms. The council member appointed to the commission shall serve for the duration of term as city council member and may be reappointed if reelected. All commissioners whose terms may expire shall serve until their successors in office have been appointed and confirmed by the city council. Any position vacated by a commissioner shall be filled by the same procedure and for the period remaining in the term of. period remaining in the term of that Commissioner. Subparagraph A, the first at-large appointed Commissioners shall begin with their terms as soon as practical and have terms expiring as follows. One Commissioner having a term that expires May 1st, excuse me, May 31st, 2022. One Commissioner having a term that expires May 31st, 2023. And two Commissioners having terms that expire May 31st, 2024. Paragraph E, Commissioners who fail to attend at least 70% of all meetings of the Commission within a 12-month period of service shall be deemed to have resigned from the Commission, and that person's position shall be deemed vacant by the City Council. Subparagraph A, such Commissioner may petition the City Council for reinstatement by filing a letter with the City Recorder Treasurer with 10 days within, there's a typo in this, it says with, well, it needs to be within 10 days after notification that the citizen's position has been declared vacant and explaining why extenuating circumstances justify reinstatement. Paragraph F, the Commissioners shall serve on the Holiday Island City Planning Commission without compensation. Section 4, Commission Meetings. Regular meetings, at least one to be held each calendar month, shall be established by the Commission and published in the manner required by Arkansas Code provisions. The Commission shall adopt rules for its own procedure. All meetings shall be open to the public and be subject to Arkansas Code provisions for elected and appointed officials. An accurate record of all meetings shall be kept, the original being filed in a journal in the City Recorder Treasurer's office as a permanent record. Audio recordings of all meetings shall be made and filed with the City Recorder Treasurer's office. Section 5, Secretarial Services. A competent Secretary shall be provided by the city for the purpose of taking notes and other measures at all meetings of the Commission and composing and typing them in order to construct an accurate record of proceedings and actions. Said Secretary shall also assist the Chairman and others on the Commission in preparing reports, agendas, correspondence, regulations, and other documents or activities that are essential to Commission business. Secretary shall be under the direction of the City Recorder Treasurer. Section 6, Appropriation of Funds. The Commission cannot expend or encumber city funds without the prior appropriation by the City Council or within the limits granted the mayor of Holiday Island. Section 7, Severability. The provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared severable, and if any section, phrase, or provision shall be declared or held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the remainder of the sections, phrases, or provisions. Section 8, Emergency Clause. The need to make use of the provisions of Title 14, Chapter 56, Subchapter 4 of the Arkansas Code of 1987 Annotated as amended to create a permanent City Planning Commission in order to adopt and enforce plans for the coordinated, adjusted, harmonious development of the city of Holiday Island and its environs and the activities associated with urban planning is immediate, and an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage. And it's noted, passed and approved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Carroll County, Arkansas, on this date of 5/18/2021.
Okay, everybody got that?
Can you repeat that?
I'll open the floor for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Jerry?
Lynn, a question on, I've got to find it again, about missing meetings, all right, here we go, E, Section 3, E.
Okay.
Commissioners fail to attend at least 70% of all meetings within a 12-month period. I mean, if there's a meeting a month, that means they will have missed three and a half meetings, which essentially is four meetings.
Right. If they, if they only schedule 12-month meetings a year, it'd be four meetings and they would have, will have vacated their office. If they schedule meetings two or three a month, then those meetings count just as well. I intended for that paragraph to mean like a rolling month, a rolling calendar, so you'd look back on the last 12 months, have you missed four meetings? If there was four out of 12, would be 80%. No, four out of 12 would be?
Sixty-seven.
It'll be 70, but, yeah, you can't miss three and a half meetings, so since you be on the fourth meeting.
Right.
That's a third.
And I guess that's my point, is that three maybe, but I wouldn't give them till four, unless it's required by statute.
No, there is no requirement in statute about attendance. In the research I did, that other cities had, several of them had some sorts of language on disqualification for lack of attendance.
I don't disagree with that, but I think it ought to be more stringent than four, three maybe.
Seventy is the, is the highest percentage of attendance that I've read in other cities. So I put 70% for that reason. We could make it higher, it's arbitrary in that regard.
Yeah, I think, I think using a percentage as opposed to a defined number of meetings is, is a good idea, because it's very likely that in the first year or so, there's going to be multiple meetings. Just as an example, today, the Planning Commission had a meet because, in a special called meeting, because a builder needed a building permit and couldn't wait until the, you know, three weeks until they have their regular meeting or something.
But isn't our Planning Commission going to do something entirely different?
No.
They're not, I mean, I mean, we will do building permits, but not look at, you know, differing from the covenants.
It won't do covenant enforcement. What the City Planning Commission will do is enforce whatever ordinances the City Planning Commission requests that the city adopt.
But they have to do that, that part first.
Right.
Essentially.
And I'm going to, and I'm going to talk about that here shortly.
So 70% is, you know, you only miss three out of 10, and another meeting would cause your, your resignation, I guess.
See, that's, that's missing almost a third of the meetings.
That's if they have one a month, but they may end up having more than one a month. If you had a couple of emergency meetings in one month.
No, I'm saying that, make the, I mean, if it's done by percentage, then I'm okay with it, but, I mean, I'd make it even more, I mean, if you, if you had three meetings a month, that's 36 meetings, and, you know, if you miss 30% of them, that's 10 meetings. That's.
It's pretty lenient.
Yeah, very lenient.
I mean, it's an arbitrary figure, so it can be adjusted. How hard would it be to change in a year or two?
Did we have, did we have Justin review this, or since it's, it's going to get into a regulatory type thing? No, we, we haven't had him review this yet. This is, this is very much adopted from what other cities do.
I just, I got one, one issue, I guess. Section 3B, and I looked at, I looked at the statutes yesterday or the day before, and 1456404 is not in the current catalog, it goes from 403 to 405. And I, I'm wondering why do we want a member of our council on a, on a planning commission? Because we say we got to have people that have expertise in, in those areas. And looking at this group that's sitting here today, I don't know anybody that's got it, but we're making it mandatory that we put somebody from, and the City Council has oversight of the Commission, so. Wes, is that something that other cities have in theirs? Is the, one of the Commissioners?
The Councilmen on the? Several examples I had, I think it was two, if not three, list the statute in the language that says that you can't have more than one-third being municipal officials. So they cite this, the statute, so they must be permitting it if they cite that statute.
But I'm, we're thinking the opposite, does it, not, do they permit it, but they have, do we have to have?
No, we don't have to have one.
It says.
It says we could, it has to be at least two-thirds non-municipal officials.
No, it's just, the ordinance says, no, what you're proposing says we have one.
There's no law that says that a Councilmember has to be on the planning commission.
I know, but our ordinance says.
Right.
Well, Ken's question is, do we want that?
I think it's a good idea myself.
I think it's a good idea, that's why I put it in the text. It gives us a liaison, it gives us.
Exactly.
A voice, a hear, a communication tool, you know, I think it's important to help.
Will there ever be a case that something the Planning Commission does would have to come before the City Council for a vote?
Yes. Every recommendation they make for an ordinance comes to the City Council for adoption. They don't, they don't put in ordinances and zoning and anything without our adoption. They recommend it.
Would a City Councilmember have a vote on the Planning Commission?
As a Commissioner, he would.
What would be wrong with making that, that like a liaison from the Council to the Planning Commission?
By title, a Commissioner would have that voting capability, and anybody else would just be a visitor.
Yeah, any of us could go to a meeting, I suppose.
Yeah, as public.
The district manager's always attended, but he's a non-voting member.
What's, what's the downside of having a Commissioner on the, I mean, a Councilmember on the Commission?
Well, two. It says we got to put somebody from this council on there, regardless of whether they have expertise or knowledge of what planning is doing. The other is that, you know, it's the hen watching, the fox watching the chickens.
There is a third requirement also, and it means an expressed interest.
I don't think there's any foxes and chickens in this scenario.
No.
We're all either foxes or we're all chickens, one or the other.
Well, I mean, okay, but I mean, the City Council's overseeing that Commission, so I don't know. That's why I ask if Justin has looked at it, if not, okay.
Well, as Councilmember, as Councilmembers, all of us are right now learning about what's involved in a planning commission, which is a little bit more, quite a bit more than what's involved with the Holiday Island Covenants and Restrictions Planning Commission.
Yeah, I looked.
So, that's why I think that, you know, I think someone from the council who is knowledgeable about the law, the statutes, what's involved in a planning commission, it would be helpful even for that person or a person to be on the planning commission to provide advice to them about what should be done in a planning.
Would that be better read, to read, maybe appointed?
Or be an ex-officio member?
I don't, I mean, we're saying we got to put somebody on there regardless of whether, whether qualified or not.
Ken, in Paragraph C, the last sentence is a demonstrated interest, experience, or expertise. Would you like to change that language and take the word demonstrated interest out? Is that what you're proposing? Because I personally have a demonstrated interest in city planning.
Where are we at? At the top, or what were you at?
In Section 3, Paragraph C, last sentence.
A demonstrated interest, we all have, we all have interests.
Well, then that would make us a qualified member of the Commissioner, as a Commissioner of the Planning Commission.
Not experience or expertise.
Well, I don't want, you know, I, I don't want to say anything critical about anybody that's serving in any capacity in Holiday Island, because virtually everybody serves as a volunteer. But it's highly unlikely that you're going to get five volunteers that are highly skilled, qualified legal authorities, construction authorities, zoning and planning authorities. You're going to get people that have an interest in serving and, and, you know, and we'll be lucky to have them.
I would feel more comfortable if that said maybe rather than shall be.
You're talking about the?
You're talking about a Commissioner shall? You want may?
I don't think that makes any difference.
Makes a whole.
I mean, I just, I mean, it's obvious Lynn would be the person, I just have a problem, whoever it is, having a vote on that panel and then coming and voting. And again, it's from my past experiences and, you know.
Well, anything they vote on in the Commission has to be approved, if it gets implemented, by us, correct?
Yes.
Because it'll have to be in the.
Kind of like what Jerry's saying is.
That's where the chicken ended.
The Commissioner, or the City Councilmember that serves as a Commissioner is kind of a ringer when it comes to the City Council voting on something, because they've already, you know.
That could be voted against.
Not necessarily, they could vote against it there and then, you know.
Four against one.
Or the Commission vote might be not supporting something and have a different view when they come to the City Council meeting.
But this may be a good time for me to interject my thoughts on this.
Okay.
The, we did, or I did, talk to the, to members of the current Planning Commission, just to get their thoughts on it. And I talked to Tom Dees today, and he and I are going to sit down sometime next week, and I'm going to get Tom's thoughts and input on it. One thing, that, one of the, one of the most difficult things for us to accomplish here is making the transition from what's going on now to what's going to happen in the future when the city takes it over. They're building houses like crazy. Terry Presley needed a building permit today. The Planning Commission as it exists today can't go away tomorrow just because we passed this ordinance, because we're not ready to take it over. We have no ordinances, we have no building codes adopted, we have no way of issuing permits. By the same token, I can't just tomorrow appoint the current Planning Commission as being the City Planning Commission and have them start issuing building permits and things as a City Commission, because they have no authority to do anything under the City umbrella. There are no ordinances for them to operate by. So they have to keep functioning as they are today, providing a valuable service to the community until the city is ready to flip the switch on it. And so, one of the things that Lynn and I talked about as a possibility, and I'm not saying this is what we're going to do yet, because we haven't heard from, from all parties yet, but one of the things that we think would work is if the, is if I go ahead and appoint the City Council, assuming you all would be willing to accept the responsibility, as the Planning Commission, then you could work kind of in the shadows, work with the current Planning Commission to develop all of the ordinances that need to be passed.
I looked at all the ordinances that are listed, and you have to, I have one for all the codes.
No, and it's different for every, every city. Some have very brief one or two paragraphs, and some have 15 pages covering theoretically the same subject. So it's got to be something that's well thought out, that we're ready to defend and support, that we can afford to defend and support with the resources that it's going to take to take on that, that task. So that would allow the current Planning Commission to keep functioning until we get at least the necessary ordinances ready to pass. Then at some point in the future, we would. we would, assuming that the current planning commission wants to transition over to the city, you know, at some point in the future, then we would dissolve the city council planning commission, and I would appoint the new or the, you know, the, the current planning commission as the city planning commission. And of course, that would be subject to your approval. Under that scenario, I think it would be a good idea, long-term, to have a council member that has researched this in great detail, be the one kind of leading that effort, and then staying on after the new, after the planning commission takes over and the, and the city council drops out of it, to stay on to, you know, to make sure that there's an ongoing smooth transition. If, you know, two or three or five years down the road, we decide that it's not advantageous anymore to have a city council member on the planning commission, then we can change the ordinance and just have them all be appointed by the mayor. So that's, you know, one of the reasons why I thought this was a good idea. You know, Lynn could do a lot of that liaison work with, with Mickey and, and those guys and, and get those ordinances drafted. And he's starting from a position of knowledge because he's spent hun, you've probably spent hundreds of hours reading how everybody else is doing it, reading the laws. You know, Mickey is pretty knowledgeable. And of course, the current planning commission, you know, they don't operate and avoid. They have a complete set of documents that they operate by. They, they operate, they have adopted the same building codes that the city is going to, the national electrical code, the international building code, you know, the plumbing codes. They already have all of that, and they can probably just hand it to us, and we just have to turn it into an ordinance. So I, I just, I think that this would be a, a good approach. But again, it's subject to confirmation after I talk to Tom and, and, and I haven't talked to Mickey about this whole transition plan. So this will all be new to everybody.
How many members are on there?
What?
How many members do they have on there?
I think they have five.
On the board?
There's five that I'm aware of.
And I think Charlotte Taylor is acting as her secretary now or something.
She takes the minutes.
Actually, I had a question about that. The, about the secretary, that the city will pay for the secretary?
Well, it says it'll provide. It doesn't say pay.
That means pay me.
Okay. Well, you know, they, you know, they will generate a certain amount of revenue for the commission, so.
Well, maybe they can contribute some. But I was just curious about it because there's a lot of things here that's listed that the secretary would be involved with, preparing reports, agendas, correspondence, regulations, and other documents, probably any document that would go before the city council, right? Maybe someone has to prepare that. That's going to have to be a fairly well-read, well-knowledgeable person, being that secretary, if they're doing all that.
And I sure hope Charlotte wants to do it.
Well, I'm just saying, that can cost a fortune if we didn't get some.
Well, I don't, I don't know if it'll cost a fortune, but the planning commission will have a budget. It will be included in the city budget.
Or would there be someone like a Lynn or one of the other current planning commission members writing this stuff up, feeding it to someone who's just formatting it?
I think that would be for the planning commission to decide how, how they want to do it.
They're going to have to keep.
What, what's in the ordinance is, you know, the kind of the minimum requirement. It's not necessarily how to, how to do it. It just, it's, it's acknowledging the fact that somebody has to take minutes and record what's going on.
I mean, that, you know, all the work that has to be turned into ordinance citizens and documents that document the overall scheme, the plan, and all that kind of stuff, that could be pretty complicated. And unless some volunteer is doing most of the work, that could get expensive.
I would imagine a lot of it's going to be like everything else we've done so far. You know, Lynn will probably end up actually drafting the ordinances and presenting them for approval.
Okay. I said, I looked at them today, and there's one for every one of those building codes. They had a different ordinance in the municipal legal thing.
Well, if you're talking about the national codes, those can be adopted with one ordinance where we adopt them the way they're written, and they go in a book, and that's what the statute says. And in reference to your comment, Ken, about 1456404, I called it up on the Arkansas Public Access for the state, and it's on my screen, and it does have a note that says unofficially updated through Act 582021, regular session. So it's still current and it's on the books. It's just not, maybe not official, but it is on the screen. It came right up.
I don't know. I use.
So it's still enforced.
I use that one to justify it or whatever it is.
Yeah, just sometimes it's a year behind.
It wasn't there.
There's a website called AR Bureau of Legislative Services. It's from the, from the state. That's my source for all these documents.
Okay.
I had another question, too.
Ken?
The, under section six, it says, or within the limits granted, the mayor of Holiday Island. Does that mean that the, that the mayor approves, could approve an appropriation outside of the city council meeting?
That was the intent.
Okay.
Because he can do that now for us.
Or I, the other way I read it was that they, the, the, the planning commission would have the same limits as the mayor and just could authorize it themselves. So.
That was not my intent. If that's the way it reads, we need to fix that.
I thought you could.
I, I read it to mean it was in the budget, a budgeted item.
Well, that, that was my intent with the prior appropriation by the city council.
Why couldn't you say just, or approved by, let's see, without, or authorized by the mayor or something like that?
I didn't want to give the mayor unlimited benefit to encumber the city.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't he be under the limits anytime he authorized something?
Well, I tried to, I guess, understand what resolution we passed way back when, or was it just a discussion about the mayor's authority to spend money? You'll have to clarify that for me.
You're asking me?
Yeah, or anyone else, if they happen to know what limit we've put on the mayor without our permission.
I'd have to look back and see, but I think if it's a budgeted items.
It's, it's within the budget.
If it's within the budget, the mayor.
And then he has, and then you.
Can authorize it.
Okay.
You know, you have, you know, other limitations, you know, like five, $10,000, $20, you know, there's, there's limits.
Well, that sounds like if, if, that he couldn't authorize anything that wasn't appropriated in the budget.
Right.
And that's correct.
Which only is the first part of that sentence.
Okay. Like I, I told Dan when I wrote this, I struggled with that sentence. How do I make it clear? The intent, you know, the intent of writing it, and we talk about the intent of the law, was that the mayor could approve buying a box of pencils.
But not buying 450 acres of.
Or, or committing the city to a $50,000 investigation.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
So if Wes has made a budget that had a certain amount for supplies, Dan could give part of that to them, right?
So if we.
In my opinion, that would be within their budget.
Yeah, within their budget.
Okay.
They would have their own budget.
Right.
I mean, they will have.
Not the city general budget.
Okay.
They will generate revenue and help.
And my third question is, does this get approved or does it have to go through multiple readings or because of the head of emergency?
No, you had emergency clause.
The intent with emergency clause, if we approve it, it's effective today.
Today, okay.
There's, there's a somewhat of a sense of urgency, I guess, on the part of the, of the current planning commission to have us start pushing forward on this because, and it's, it's not in the areas of covenant enforcement so much as it is, because they understand that there are certain things in the covenants that we're not going to have the legal authority to enforce anyway. But just like they have very little teeth to enforce things like, you know, people parking their RV in their driveway or something like that, they really have very little teeth to enforce the building codes and stuff. They issue a building permit, and the builder says, you know, I swear and promise that I'm going to follow, you know, the international building code and the electrical code and everything else. But we have no building inspector. We, so they have no real leverage in enforcing that other than to send a letter to, you know, whoever violated the, the, you know.
Unit covenant?
Their, either the covenants or their regulations, and, and put it in the file for future reference. That way, if something happens to the property as a result of what the planning commission noted as defective construction, you know, the, the planning commission will at least be somewhat protected legally because they pointed it out to the builder and the builder didn't do anything about it. So whereas, you know, eventually, now this is some, this is step, you know, three or four down the road, but eventually, you know, we will have a building inspector, a code enforcement officer to enforce that and issue citations and, and.
Stop work.
If, if buildings aren't built to code, then they don't get a certificate of occupancy and, you know, unless they're paying cash for their house, they won't get a loan. So.
Now, with regard to this, this sense of urgency, if, this is not going to actually do any good unless we make a choice of A or B under section three, right?
That's correct. All this ordinance does is establish the commission. It doesn't name who the participants, the members are.
So it will be a second ordinance, another ordinance?
Yes, ma'am.
Choose the pass?
Yes.
We couldn't amend this one.
Well, if we, if we appoint the, the city council, if we go that route.
Has to be approved by ordinance.
Yeah, then that would be another ordinance. If I just appoint a, a council or a commission, then that doesn't.
Well, because I, because I drafted this to put the option in, we would probably have to have an ordinance to choose paragraph A or paragraph B.
And I don't know, I'm with Jerry. I don't know why we couldn't just modify this to use one paragraph versus the other. Or is that something?
Well, I initially wrote it with only the paragraph B as an option, and so all the language talks about what these appointed commissioners' qualifications are and how they're appointed, their terms of office, but yet.
Although it makes more sense to have a second ordinance in that regard because that needs to stay for the future.
Well, I think.
See the, you know, if, if I choose option B to appoint a commission, then those commissioners have to be approved by the town council, which is why I didn't think it would take another ordinance.
I don't think you get the option to choose, though. I mean, how do you, how do you figure you get the option to choose? Excuse my.
Because there's an A and a B.
It says, but we may be, we may elect, so I guess, I would say.
It says you may elect by ordinance, so.
So you may choose by ordinance to allow.
To option A?
What is that?
Don't you think the council would have to agree to option A?
Yeah, that's why I said, if, if, if I, if, if we choose option A, then it will take another ordinance to choose option A.
Otherwise.
But if we decide to go some other route because Mickey and Tom and everybody else has more insight into that than, than we do, then, then I think all I need to do is present a slate of commissioners and you guys vote on it.
Yeah.
I think all, all we're doing is giving Dan an alternative way to, as he, as he progresses through talking to the current people.
But I still think the emergency clause is good because that, that gives me, I don't have to wait 90 days and have three readings and everything to, to work with Tom because, like I, like I said, I, I think there's, there are some reasons that this has some urgency to it.
I think there are a lot of reasons that it has urgency. If you talk to, if you talk to any of those guys on the current commission, and we've all dealt with it for a long time, and people have got pretty blatant about not.
Right. Just for clarity, then, other than the typo on page two where with should be within, are there any other changes to this as written?
Mr. Mayor, because of the discussion tonight and the apparent feelings that we don't necessarily want to mandate one commissioner being a city council, I'd recommend that we change in section three, paragraph B, that one commissioner may be appointed rather than shall.
I, I think that.
That gives the permission to, through the ordinance, to appoint a council member, but also the choice not to.
It'd be up to the mayor.
But it's up to the mayor.
To, to make his, well, that's true.
Right, right now it says.
On the record, it'd be up to the county.
Okay.
I mean, that's my personal.
Well, but the council asked.
The council asked to approve it.
Council asked to approve it.
The mayor appoints him, and then we approve it.
Right.
Okay. I can live with that.
Yeah.
So is May okay to revise it?
I, 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 I like that.
Okay, so.
And that gives us.
Okay.
So you're just changing the shall to may?
Yes, one commissioner may be appointed from city council members.
Okay, if that's all the discussion, then I would entertain a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2021-002 as presented with two corrections. One, changing shall to may from the last sentence on page one, and correcting the typo of within, of with to within under section E-A on page two.
Make a motion, we approve.
Did we need to strike the last part of the sentence in section six, the with, the one that's handed the mayor? Or, I mean, possibly it's just extraneous and it doesn't really.
I, I understand. It, it, it makes sense to me. I don't know, I guess I'm not quite understanding with this.
Well, I guess what we discussed was that limits granted the mayor are contained within, it's appropriated in the budget someplace, so it sort of doesn't need to be there. But if y'all want to leave it in, I'm okay to.
Well, in regard of the word budget, I left that word out because something may come along during the year that they want to purchase, and so they would bring it to either us or the mayor and say, I need a new printer, and it's not in my budget. What can we do?
So you appropriate by ordinance or something, or resolution, probably.
Resolution, yeah.
So, yeah.
So I, I tried to allow them to have the, the inadvertent plan, you know, the things that happen.
Yeah.
Allowed.
Okay, Ken made a motion.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2021-002.
With the two changes.
Seconded. As amended.
Ken made a motion to approve the ordinance 2021-002 as amended, and Pat seconded it. Any further discussion? Wes, you want to call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitman?
Aye.
All in favor, your honor?
Okay, the ordinance passed and we'll post this according to our posting requirements.
I'll revise the copy, Wes, and send it to you for signature.
Okay, moving on, ordinance 2021-003, establishing rules of conduct. Do I have a motion to place this on the floor for discussion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Lynn made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Yeah, Jerry seconded it.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Lynn, you want to...
Ordinance number 2021-003, an ordinance establishing the rules of conduct for city council, boards, commissions, and committees of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas Resolution 2021-6, adopted January 7, 2021, was limited to the current elected municipal officials, and whereas the City of Holiday Island elected officials and citizens that they appoint to boards, commissions, and committees will be interacting with each other in the public, and whereas the City of Holiday Island currently does not have a municipal code which would establish a code of conduct and a city planning commission has been created, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of Holiday Island, Section 1, that the municipal officials, namely the mayor, council members, recorder, treasurer, and citizens appointed by the mayor confirmed by the city council to boards, commissions, and committees, shall hold themselves accountable to the principles and guidelines of the City of Holiday Island Code of Conduct. Section 2, emergency clause, the need for this code of conduct due to the creation of the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, the urgency in beginning the necessary planning process, and the anticipated nomination and approval of commissioners, is immediate and an emergency is hereby declared to exist and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage. Section 3, repeal of conflicting provisions. Resolution 2021-006 or parts of the same in conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of such conflict, and there's an attachment, the City of Holiday Island Code of Conduct and affirmation signature form. It's noted that it's passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date, May 18, 2021. The policy reads, City of Holiday Island Code of Conduct, number one, conduct of public meetings, practicing or practice civility and decorum in all discussions and debate. Municipal officials will not make rilegious, personal, impertinent, slanderous, threatening, abusive, or disparaging comments. No shouting or physical actions that could be construed as threatening will be tolerated. Therefore, avoid personal comments that could offend other municipal officials. Honor the role of the mayor and chairpersons of boards, commissions, committees in maintaining order. Be respectful of other members of the town council, boards, commissions, committees, city staff, and the public by refraining from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks. Treat fellow municipal officials with the respect you expect to receive in return. Always address citizens, employees, and fellow municipal officials with respect. Request the opportunity to speak and address the council, board, commission, committee through the mayor or other person conducting the meeting. Recognize fellow municipal officials and guest speakers by their formal names and appropriate titles after initial acknowledgement. The terms mister and miss may be used. Be respectful of others' time and be brief and prepared in making remarks. Be prompt in attending public meetings so they may begin at the publicly posted time. Number two, conduct of the public. Be polite and professional to speakers. Municipal officials should remember that their behavior will either relax the speaker or push their emotions to a higher level of intensity. Therefore, limit comments to issues and avoid personal attacks. Remain seated when someone is speaking at the podium. Give the appearance of active listening. Ask for clarification but avoid debate and argument with the public. Do not engage in personal attacks of any kind under any circumstance. Make no promises on behalf of this council, board, commission, or committee or staff. Make no personal comments about other municipal officials. The third page is the City of Holiday Island Code of Conduct with affirmation. This code of conduct is designed to describe the manner in which the municipal officials, mayor, council members, recorder, treasurer, citizens appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council to boards, commissions, and committees, shall treat one another and others with whom they come in contact in representing the City of Holiday Island. I affirm that I have read and understand the City of Holiday Island Code of Conduct. The principles and guidelines for municipal officials set forth in this document promote civility and set a standard of excellence that engenders trust and promotes the public good. This municipality will not condone activities that are in violation of these principles and appropriate conduct. And then, there's a list of places to sign, the name of the council, board, commission, or committee, whoever leads it, and then the members. At the bottom, it says municipal officials are required to affirm commitment to this policy at the beginning of their term or appointed, and all elected municipal officials are required to reaffirm commitment annually. End of policy.
During discussion on the ordinance?
This is very similar to the words that were in the resolution that we passed in January, and the policy is similar also. I expanded it to include the boards, commissions, and committees as read. Essentially, that's the only change.
One question, Mr. Mayor. Why would we just not repeal or cancel Resolution 2021-006? It says, pardon, repeal conflicting provisions.
Well, it's repealed. The conflict is that it isn't the same language, so it's repealed.
Okay. It is repealed.
Yes. If we adopt this ordinance, we've repealed 2106.
And Wes, you probably would want to go in the official record and indicate that the resolution was repealed in favor of this ordinance?
I would think so. I need to figure out how, what is the appropriate way to do that?
What I've seen examples on other websites where they list ordinances and resolutions, they make a note, they put a parentheses, and they say, "replaced or repealed by ordinance number such and such." Just a simple note on the title so that you can see it.
Like on our table of contents.
Yes, sir. And there might be a note attached if you wanted to, a copy of this, if you want to go that far, attach it to the bottom of that resolution as an addendum. You could do that.
Well, my thought would be, I'd say, repeal May 18, 2021 and replace by ordinance 2021-003.
That would work in your index.
Yeah, I would note that right on the resolution because otherwise somebody is going to be doing a search of resolutions, they'll come across that one and think it's still in effect if there's nothing noted on it, if they're not going by the index. So... Okay, any other discussion on the ordinance? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2021-003.
Make a motion, we adopt ordinance number 21, 2021-003.
Ken made the motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Linda made the second. Wes, you want to call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Fitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
All in favor, your honor?
Okay, ordinance number 2021-003 is adopted. Next on the agenda is authorization for $3,000 to go towards the front entrance upgrade. Anybody that's been in and out of the front entrance has seen that it's been taken down to the curb. Basically, all the overgrown vegetation is gone, the rocks and everything have been removed, and it's waiting for some electrical work to be done and the irrigation lines to be put in. I'm not exactly sure what the holdup is on the electrical, but I didn't get a chance to talk to Lawrence today, but it might be the rain.
Maybe a foot of water in it.
Yeah, no electrician wants to stand up to their knees in water, working on it.
Do we have, Mr. Mayor, out of curiosity, is there an estimate for the whole thing?
The...
A rough estimate? If not, I just...
The, originally, there was no estimate. It all started out with a committee being appointed by HICID to study upgrading the front entrance because it was getting to be a maintenance nightmare for volunteers primarily to keep the overgrown vegetation pruned back, keep the weeds out of it and everything. And the, the HICID Board of Commissioners, two years ago already, voted to remove the guard shack because it also was in need of repair, and it was kind of a nuisance out there because people would drive into Holiday Island and stop there expecting there to be a guard to come out and wave them through or something like that. So, so the VOC took action, the guards, the little guard shack disappeared, which kind of forced our hand to do something with the rest of it. The committee was supposed to come up with ideas, which they did, they had a lot of different ideas, and, but what it finally came down to was, HICID appropriated $15,000 to go towards upgrading the front entrance, which at the time, we were thinking would also include a new sign. The, John Prang volunteered to, his guys to go in there and do all the dirt work and everything and put whatever new landscaping in that the committee decided on, and there is a design for that. They went to Bear Creek and Bear Creek provided a design for the vegetation, I believe, for free with the assumption that we would buy all the plants and stuff from them. The, there was an estimate of $3,000 to do two borings under the street, one for electrical and one for irrigation lines, because the irrigation right now comes from basically Robert Knapp's side of the street, and it's old and it's not functional anymore. And the electrical, we thought, we thought the streetlights and the sign, electrical was coming off of Robert Knapp's building. And, and then the plugs for the, all of the Christmas decorations and everything that spread out all over up front there was on a meter that HIAHA has been paying the bill on. Well, as it turns out, everything, the streetlights and everything are on that HIAHA meter.
Our bill is not that big. I can't remember, I mean, and it doesn't seem like we only get one. I can, I just read through the budget just last week, I can't, it's not very much.
They may have given you a special rate on it or something.
But at any rate... It seemed like it'd be a lot more than that if it was, because it only really goes up at Christmas time.
Except that if the streetlights and the, and the sign are being lit from that meter too.
Well, yeah, then you'd think we'd get a fairly sizable bill all year round, but we don't.
Yeah. Well, the latest thinking is...
Well, don't look everything up the HIAHA, our budget's way down.
No, no, in fact, we were going to do the opposite. You know, we were going to take that responsibility away from, from HIAHA and either have the city take over that meter because it's part of the roads, the island is part of the street up there, or have HIAHA take over the meter. And so, the project kind of grew and grew and grew, and then it kind of scaled back and scaled back a little bit to the point where now the plan is to put new vegeta, to do the electrical, do the irrigation, put in new vegetation, but not replace the sign at this time.
Good, I still have a gallon of paint for that sign.
Well, except that painting it a different color is, I think, is part of the plan.
We like the green. You didn't work for John, dear. No, no, but I'll tell you a story about where that paint come from later. It was the ugly color on the back of my deck when we bought our house.
Well, at least we know who to blame.
It was green before.
So, anyway, I am not 100% sure that, it looked at one time like it was going to take $15,000 plus the $3,000 to do the borings and the electrical, and I thought I'd asked the city for the $3,000 to, you know, to go towards the project. I'm not 100% sure that, that they, that the project calls for it right now, and again, I didn't have a chance to talk to Lawrence about it. But, you know, they are going to want to finish that entrance up, I'm sure, before we get a chance to meet again. So, if it is going to take the extra funds, I would like to ask the council to approve that expenditure.
I make a motion, we approve an expenditure of $2,000, $3,000 to aid in the upgrade of the front entrance. However, I would rather that that come out of the general fund, not the road. I think, I don't, I think it's a stretch to make it road.
It's, it's more road than anything else.
It's in the road.
It's the streetlights.
No, it isn't.
Yeah. Basically, that's what we're looking to do, power the streetlights.
I know.
So, and there'll be more money in the road fund.
I just want to make sure that, you know, when we get to next year, we got $250,000 in the road fund to pay that grant.
There are no streetlights there now, are there?
There's, yeah, there's two streetlights there. One of them currently works, but because they ripped up all the wires and everything else in the demolition phase, they're waiting for the electrician to come in and figure out how to put it back together again so that the sign is lit and the streetlight out by the highway is working.
There is this road.
When I came in last night, there was one streetlight.
With Cherokee Village and everything in it. I would like to stay clean, but anyway, it does really make, I mean, we've got funds both places.
Well, you're not, you're not including that in the motion, then?
I, it's, it's discussion.
Do you want to make a motion and then we can get a second and then discuss it?
Yeah, make a motion, we approve.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Make a motion, we approve up to $3,000 for the completion.
We need to make a motion to discuss it first, don't we?
No. We make a motion and then we'll discuss. Discuss the motion.
Okay. Am I through?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you, did you specify what fund it would come out of?
No, sir.
Huh?
No, sir.
Okay. Do I have a second on the motion to approve up to $3,000?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Now we can open it for discussion. First of all, what fund would it come out of? I recommend the street fund because street funds can be used for things other than paving and maintenance. It can be used for any public parking areas and things like that, and I think streetlights squarely come under roads.
I agree with Dan.
I wasn't part of the committee in any suggestions, but are they going to upgrade the lighting to the high-intensity LED for energy conservation or...
They might be already. They might be already.
Okay.
Kenny's been doing that on a regular basis.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
In fact, um, I'd, I'd bet they are, because he also replaced the ones, uh, up by the park for, um, for Tom.
Look, that lamp that illuminates the marinas is amazingly bright.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, kind of lighting if we had on that corner would be amazing.
Yeah. He replaced all the ones a couple of years ago already down by the rec center, and we saved five thousand dollars the first year.
Amazing.
Okay.
So...
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, one question, the, uh, you mentioned the Bear Creek and the plants and vegetation. I think I read something on, on Facebook, and it must be true if it was on Facebook, that, that one of the plans was to make part of that a butterfly garden?
No.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's maybe the only thing that wasn't mentioned in the committee meeting.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against butterflies.
Well, I am, but thank you.
But, you know, uh, it, the first couple of years of butterfly gardens look like nothing but weeds, so...
We haven't gone down with it yet.
I, I'd have to say that Mickey Feinfield, who was on the committee, um, has offered a rendering of a nice, modern-looking sign for up there, but that's going to be a, have to be a Phase Two thing with, uh, with more funding, but he really, it, it really looks nice, so...
I would like to see something up there, fl, on the flank there, you know? And then someday, maybe the highway commissioner will even put up a sign that says Holiday Island.
We probably have to ask them.
Well, I don't know, maybe, uh, excuse me.
Um, do you want to amend your motion to, uh, to specify the money coming out of the street fund?
I amend my motion for the street fund.
Thank you.
Reluctant.
Do we have a second on the amended motion?
Second.
Okay, Ken made a motion that we approved up to three thousand dollars for the front entrance out of the street fund. Jerry seconded it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And like I said, I'm not sure we're going to need it. I just wanted it approved in case we did need it. Now we're up to public comments.
Okay.
Any, anybody left on Zoom?
We outlast them.
Raise your hand or do something so, or unmute yourself if you're out there in Zoomland.
Make a scene.
I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay. Mayor or council member comments? I hope that by next time, we'll be able to have face-to-face meetings again.
And that, and my thing, it says you're going to dig us something on the rescue funds.
Oh, yeah, status of rescue fund, that's right. I'm glad you read the agenda. Yeah, just a little update on the rescue funds, and this may not be news to anybody in this room, but it may be to the people on, um, on Zoom. Um, the, you know, there's, there's money coming out of the federal government, um, by the truckload, and, um, the latest, um, bill passed, the American Rescue Plan, has, um, billions and billions of dollars for states, cities, counties, and, um, you know, schools and things like that, uh, to be used to, uh, for, for a couple of general purposes. One is to offset any, um, uh, additional expense a city may have incurred, or the county may have incurred, uh, as a result of the COVID pandemic, like any premium pay that, any premium pay that they may have had to pay employees, uh, the expense of, uh, making facilities, um, COVID-proof and things like that. Um, another re, uh, another authorized use of the money is, uh, any, um, lost revenue, which most cities haven't actually lost any revenue, uh, as a po, as a, as a result of the pandemic, which is kind of amazing, but, um, that is one of the authorized uses. The third, uh, big bucket is, um, infrastructure, which really isn't COVID-related, but it was an opportunity for, um, for legislation to be passed that would pump some money into, uh, local economies for, or local municipalities to deal with, um, deteriorating infrastructure. Um, the, kind of the umbrella reason for including it was that it would create jobs, which is probably true. Um, the money, uh, if you were, uh, if you were a metropolitan area, um, meaning a population of twenty-five thousand or more, the federal government was going to automatically deposit your money in your bank account. And then you had until, I believe it's 2024, to allocate the money.
And, yeah.
And, and, uh, 2026, I think, to spend it all. So it's not something you got to do like within the next six months. Um, for smaller, what they call non-entitlement communities or something like that, um, they were going to give the money to the states, and the state was going to distribute it. But the federal government, Treasury, did provide some guidelines as to how the money was supposed to be distributed. It was going to be distributed by population and, um, by, uh, and it could not exceed more than seventy-five percent of your 2020 annual budget. And there was one other restriction, I don't remember what the third one was, but, and we're talking about big dollars, you know, 'cause, um, the county, Carroll County is, I think, in line to get five million dollars. Uh, Eureka Springs is supposed to get four hundred thousand dollars or something like that. Our problem is that, um, we didn't exist in 2020. And, uh, as a result, when the Treasury Department came up with a list of cities, we weren't on the list. And of course, we didn't have a budget in 2020. So I contacted, um, Senator Cotton, um, Womack, uh, Womack's office, and Bozeman's office, and, and Bob Ballinger and Harland Row, contacted everybody I could think of to, um, see if we could be on the list. And, um, um, Womack's office has been very, very responsive. Now, there's a general, a guy that works over in the Rogers office, his name is Kyle Weaver, he's been in, uh, regular contact with me. Um, he was in regular contact, contact with their offices in Washington, was in regular contract, contact with the Treasury Department. What they, what they were working on is trying to get a certain amount of money to the states that the state could use, uh, kind of as their, at their discretion, uh, to deal with exceptions. And he said, "We aren't the only one, even in Womack's district, that, um, that is an exception," because Bethel Heights was a city in 2020, and they're not a city anymore because they were annexed by Springdale, and of course, Springdale would sure like to have that share of the money. So that's an exception that they're trying to deal with. Their, the, um, the rules for, the final rules for distribution of the funds to the counties and smaller, uh, cities was supposed to come out this week, but I haven't heard anything yet from Kyle Weaver. So I'm hoping that we can, uh, that we can get on the list and get some money. We already confirmed that we, as, as a city, you know, we, we don't have any infrastructure. The city doesn't have any infrastructure. The infrastructure is all, you know, controlled by HICID right now. However, it is, um, allowable for us to sub-grant that money to the district, so we crossed that hurdle. If we get some money, we can sub-grant it to HICID to be used for a project. Um, and I asked Lawrence and, um, Bob Dyer to start looking for a shovel-ready project that, you know, would be, uh, uh, infrastructure project that would be, uh, you know, hopefully, uh, funded by four hundred thousand dollars from this, from this money. I don't know if we're going to get any, I don't know if we're going to get the same amount as every other community would, but I did provide them with, since we didn't have a budget in 2020, I gave them HICID's budget for 2020, and I said, "This is, you know, had we been a city longer, this would have been our, you know, our city budget would have looked something like this." And, um, and, and I made the same argument that everybody has, our infrastructure was basically put in in nineteen seventy, we're in the nineteen seventies, so we have the same problems as everybody. So I don't know if we would use, if we get money, I'm not sure if we would use it on, um, waterline projects or something. I would sure like to be able to use that money to start replacing some of the four-inch water lines that constantly spring leaks.
I, uh, I, I, if I missed you saying it, I, I'm sorry, but I didn't hear you say that infrastructure is limited to water, sewer, and broadband.
It is. Thank you for mentioning that. There's three things that the infrastructure, we can't use it for roads and stuff like that. It's, it's limited to sewer and water projects and broadband.
I would like, you know, there's large sections of Holiday Island that do not have broadband.
Yeah.
And I, actually, I think the county is going to allocate a great portion of their money to broadband, so we might not have to worry about it ourselves.
Might be able to.
Yeah, I thought they were going to upgrade their radios and their towers and...
Well, that, that's part of, it's communications.
Communication, but, but you cannot spend the money on a, uh, we can't sub-grant the money to a private company. We would not be able to give Cox four hundred thousand dollars and say, run cable up, you know, in unit two, so...
We have to put it in ourselves.
We would have to do something clever. I don't know exactly how we would do that.
I've seen, in the paper I've read, where they have grants for different counties and different areas, and they, they do subcontract it to, but that's different money, so...
Yeah, yeah, there's...
Well, basically, with broadband, you don't, because we have it, we have partial coverage everywhere, you, you have to target the areas that don't have it, so you have to spend, it's going to be a section of someplace, it might be in unit two that doesn't have it, so...
Yeah, and it's, it's way, way, way out of my area of expertise. I have enough trouble getting myself on the work.
I don't know.
So, uh, but I know that there's options to just running, you know, coaxial cable up the ditch and hooking it up to somebody's house, you know, and I, you know, it may be, uh, necessary to start looking at something else like, you know, 5G or something like that, that's not, uh, that uses radios and not cables.
I'll comment also, if we, when you deal with federal funds, you have to follow federal rules, even with this money, you're going to have to, we would have to account for how we spend the money, and if it's, if it doesn't meet the, the rules, it has, it will have to be repaid if it's not legally spent.
That's the kind of...
And if, if we sub-grant to the district, then it's our responsibility to make sure that the district follows the rules, because if they don't, the city is still responsible for that money.
We'd have to pay it back. That is, uh, you know, the, the good news is, it's not like a grant where you have to submit your project and get it approved ahead of time. The bad news is, you don't have to submit your project ahead of time and get it approved. You're basically going into a project with the assumption, you know, well-thought-out and communicated with people that would probably know that it qualifies, but nevertheless, like Wes said, um, it, uh, they'll come in and do an audit after the fact, after the money is spent, and if they say, "No, that, I mean, you just, you didn't do that right," then we'd have to pay it back.
They'll work out a payment plan for you.
In that, uh, community, in that allowance.
We can't, we can't pay it back.
I don't, I think they...
We don't have a money. And also, there is no matching requirement.
Right.
To the response either.
Right. I mean, we're going to take this one step at a time. If, you know, step one is getting the money, and, and I, you know, some days I think it's a long shot, and some days, you know, I think that there's a possibility, so we'll, we'll see. Um, I, I like the way they approached it, where instead of asking the federal government to make an exception for little bitty Holiday Island in Arkansas, which they wouldn't be interested in doing at all, uh, they said, you know, "Every state is going to have lots of little exceptions, and in order to make it fair, uh, just give the states a certain amount of money that they can use at their discretion," and that would seem to, to make sense.
If, um, if the, um, option to spend it on communications is available, maybe we can, um, have a project for civil defense and install weather-type sirens for where they're needed to alert Holiday Island. Maybe that would be funded.
Maybe.
That'd take a lot of money.
I know it would, because of the way we're, the way our terrain is, but that'd be worthwhile.
Yeah. Yeah. We've, we've had a lot of, on the past years on the Board of Commissioners, we've had discussions about weather sirens, and there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of mixed feelings about it. My experience is, when the weather, when the sirens go off, everybody runs outside to see where the tornado is. They don't run for their shelter.
But technology continues to improve, so there, there might be solutions.
And, and almost everybody has got one of these now that goes off when there's a weather alert.
No kidding? It goes off all the time.
That'd scare the...
I'd get three o'clock in the morning.
Chris almost got hers flushed last time I did it, going off next to the bed. What's that damn thing doing in the bedroom?
Okay, um, so hopefully by the end of the week, we'll know, one way or another, if we're going to get some of that, uh, some of that Christmas money. Okay, um, scheduling, next regular meeting is...
June seventeen.
June seventeen.
Thank you.
Seventeenth, did you say?
Yep.
Let me double-check, but I think that's what, yeah, June seventeen.
Any other announcements? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Jerry made the motion to adjourn.
I, uh, uh... June seventeenth is a Thursday.
It is?
On my calendar, it is.
I may have the wrong year. You're right, it's June, June fifteenth.
Okay.
Two years ago, it was June fifteenth. You got to check the year and the month, don't you?
Okay.
You're right.
Now we'll go back. Jerry made a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
Who got a credit for the second?